Approve the prior minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the prior minutes.
I'll say it.
Any questions or comments?
All in favor.
You can copy that gentleman here.
Anybody opposed? Communications to the board.
We've got a gentleman here tonight with Mr. Baker. I'd like to let him have a little hip hop first, just expedite that way doesn't have to wait too long.
Sure. So, when I was in Martin County, we experienced the same issue they had here where we, the health departments got out of the school nurse business. And so, we were kind of scrambling to try to provide services for the kids that we were obligated to. So, I was aware that Big Sandy Healthcare, which is a federally qualified health provider center in our region, they operate several clinics here. And I knew that they had done some nursing services in some other districts. So, I reached out to Mr. Lewis, who my wife knew from her days in human resource management. And he was gracious enough there to provide us with a registered nurse for one of our schools at no cost to the district, other than that we would, they would be allowed to provide the dental services, which Paintsville already does with Big Sandy Healthcare anyway. So, to make a long story short, when I came here, I knew that we didn't have a nurse at the high school. And so...
Well, we have a nurse that's split between the two buildings.
Correct, correct. And they have also, that partnership initially there in Martin grew to not only put the dental and medical, but also some behavioral health services. They have licensed clinical and social workers that work there. So, you know, do some counseling with our students. So, I wanted to bring, I brought that idea to Mr. Gibson, and he thought that was something that we should explore and bring to you guys. So, we're going to turn over here to Mr. Lewis to give a little bit about the services.
For Big Sandy Healthcare, Mr. Lewis.
Well, Big Sandy Healthcare is a nonprofit corporation that's been around since the mid 1970s. Big Sandy Healthcare has always operated in medical clinics. You may have heard of the Mud Creek Clinic, for example, Hope Family Medical Center in Sagertown. We currently have six clinics that we operate. But, you know, as a nonprofit corporation, you know, what I always say is that means no, we don't have any own. Big Sandy Healthcare is not owned by anyone. So, it does have a board of directors that oversees the organization, but it doesn't have owners or shareholders. So, the profit that we make is retained by the organizations, not paid out to shareholders or that sort of thing. We are a federally qualified health center at the federal level. We're also known as a community health center. And we're known as a community health center because we receive a little bit of federal grant funding. But basically, been around since 1970s. We operate medical clinics. We have a pretty broad scope of services in our clinics, medical, dental, optometry, pharmacy, laboratory, and so on. We've been providing services in schools for a number of years. I think we've provided dental services in Floyd County schools for 12 years. I know the team was telling me that some of the kids they started seeing as first graders are now graduating. We've provided dental services in Martin County schools, Johnson County, and here at Paintsville for a few years. As Mr. Baker says, we also provide other services in Martin County. We've had nurses. We've provided behavioral health therapy. In Floyd County, we've had a nurse practitioner in one of the schools. They've invited us, put a nurse practitioner in a second school this year. But basically, what I want to talk to you about specifically here in Paintsville Independent Schools, we have provided dental services for a few years. We would like to continue to provide those dental services. We are also prepared to put a nurse practitioner in the Paintsville Independent Schools. And of course, the advantage there is a nurse practitioner, they practice pretty independently. They can diagnose and treat a broad spectrum of problems, including prescribing medications. And the advantage, of course, is it has the ability to keep kids in the school. They don't have to go home. They don't have to be taken out in many cases to see a provider. That can be done in the schools.
You'll also be seeing staff as well?
Certainly. We always do. And as I said, we have, this past year, we had a nurse practitioner at South Floyd Elementary in Floyd County. And the nurse practitioner there, of course, saw kids, teachers, and staff. And they gave her a good report card. But we're prepared to, of course, we want to continue dental. We're prepared to put a nurse practitioner in the schools. And we're also prepared to supplement the behavioral health services that we currently have by adding a licensed clinical social worker a day or two a week in the school setting.
The dental, I don't say, dental, is that used to charge premiums very much for the dental? Or what? What, from your side, what's the dental rate?
Okay. We provide dental services. The main thing that we do is we provide preventive services. We have a dentist. We have dental hygienists. They come in, they only see the children or the school kids that we have a signed consent form for. The parent or guardian has signed a consent form. The dentist examines the teeth. They do, they have portable x-ray. They x-ray the teeth. The hygienist cleans the teeth. They apply fluoride varnish or sealants to the teeth. We also have the capability to provide treatment on a limited basis. We have, we have a truck, a 40-foot mobile dental van that we can bring to the schools for the few kids that have serious dental problems.
I had a third budget working with your Hope Medical Clinic when I was in Goffa County. So, I know the service that you guys provide, and I'll call you later with in Martin.
Now, we do, we do, if the child is covered by insurance or Medicaid, we bill for that visit. It is with a dentist. A dentist sees every kid. If they're not covered, we don't bill anyone. We don't bill the parent. We don't bill the board of education. We simply write that off.
So, in essence, we're going to have one of the best medical programs for a school around will have a nurse practitioner in our buildings. We also will still have Ms. Lauffer will be helping with that as well. Our kids, if they're feeling under the weather, they'll have an opportunity to go here first. And I think it's a great idea. I guess from this end, we, is the partnership on here, yes, it is. It's on the consent agenda, item 515.
Yeah.
So, you got any questions for Mr. Lewis or Mr. Baker? Anything like that?
Right, right.
Right, right.
George, we're going to pay for it.
Anything else? We want to thank you for the opportunity. Like I said, I'm familiar with your Hope Clinic.
Right.
I'm with them. Mildred. Is Mildred retired or is she still working?
She's still working.
I didn't think she, I don't think she's ever retired.
She's still going strong.
When you said Mildred, you said, tell her Davey was asking about her.
Okay.
But wonderful, wonderful group to work with. We'll be thankful to have you in this.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We appreciate your...
Willingness.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks for Mr. Baker bringing it down here.
I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Ms. Austin.
Just some of my thoughts of things that are going on are CNPS team just finished, they actually got home yesterday. They were internationals. And our FTS team, to be honest with you, they were seventh in the world. So, very proud of how both those teams competed at internationals. You know, our, very proud of our academic program. Some updates on what's going on at the high school. I've started today meeting with all the teachers and just getting feedback from them, things they want to see for the next year, talking about plans for next year that we have in place, which I'm sure Mr. Ratliff will talk about, you know, MAP testing and ACT, pre-ACT, and looking at those programs. And we've also set the dates for, at the end of the year, we met with junior and senior parents to give them a heads up of what's coming next year. And then, I think it's the fifth, sixth, seventh, it's the first few days of, yes, the fifth, sixth, and seventh. We'll be doing our schedules and fees and things of that nature. And then, on the fifth, we're going to meet with our sophomore parents. So, our sophomore teachers can talk to them about what to expect next year. The sixth, we'll meet with seventh and, or eighth and ninth. And then, our jumpstart and seventh grade parent meeting will be on the seventh. So, just planning with teachers of the upcoming year, already getting the ball rolling with them. So, they're actually really excited about, you know, they're already working hard, looking at the next year. And they're not taking a break from the ones that I've met with so far.
Ninety percent planning, 10% implementation. And she's definitely in the planning phase right now. So, I want to commend her and your staff for giving up their time to come in and try to get the groundwork ready for next year.
Yeah, they're, they're real excited.
And today's the first day. We've got several more days, I'm sure, to get through everybody. Ms. Austin also had the privilege, I think she'll be talking to you some. She met with Mr. Fuller Friday. She went Wednesday to an SBD hand training for principals. If you could stick around a little bit tonight and have a conversation about that.
Okay.
Mr. Director.
This time last month, we met, we were finishing up with our PPREP testing. Everything went very well. Everything went very smoothly at both the elementary school and the high school. Once again, I always like to commend my two backs, my two building assessment coordinators, Ms. Raker and Dr. McCarty. They do a great job within the buildings. And also, Ms. Austin and Ms. Webb, they do a lot to help me during those times. So, I always like to recognize them. And the kids, the kids did phenomenal. Our attendance was, was great during testing and everything went very well. The thing that she was alluding to there a minute ago, we, Mr. Gibson and I have kind of talked about it. We've thrown it around a little bit. And we're looking at, at the high school level with the ACT. You know, at the 11th grade, we know that our 11th graders every year take the ACT statewide. And our juniors do the same thing. But we would like to get a little bit of data prior to our juniors taking that ACT. And they have offered pre-ACT, something called the pre-ACT. And we can give that, we're thinking about possibly giving that to our eighth graders and our 10th graders to kind of set some baseline data to prepare us a little bit for that. So, that's what she was referring to there. And that could possibly, at the high school level, take the place of some of the MAP testing that we do, which would probably save us a little bit of money and some instructional time as well. So, something that we'll have to throw around with, with the principals. One of the items that you have is the Certified Evaluation Plan, the first reading. The Certified Evaluation Plan is the same exact plan as we had last year. KDE required no new changes, nothing to be added to this year's Certified Evaluation Plan. So, that one's going to be the exact same as it was last year.
What's the certified?
That's just how we evaluate staff.
Okay.
Certified.
Who does the certification, certified? I value it.
The principals do in the buildings. I do, everyone else that's on the district level, employees, or mine, and principals have the, their staff in the building. Mr. Schmidt.
I got the bank bid. I've got one look at, we've got three. One was from, the first one was like City or Citizens brought theirs in, and they're offering a fixed rate of 2%. And the alternate could be a variable rate that could go up to as high as 2.6% if you vary each month. City National came in at 1.8% variable. And I think Peoples Bank came in at 2% or 2 and 1/4. If you did 2 and 1/4 with them, you had to pay for your own deposit slips, bags, checks.
Who's this?
With Peoples, if you bid. Or you can stick with 2% Peoples, and they'll provide all the other stuff for you, just like Citizens does now.
We should, Citizens here, pick it up here. Okay. Citizens will give us 2%. Right now, the market rate is 2 and 1/2. And we bid before, it was .25. The Federal Reserve has raised it from .25 to 2 and 1/2 in the last, 2 and 1/2 years. Right now, we have inverted the level yield curve, which usually says, hey, we're going to go into recession. Usually rates are going to go down. But they've been forcing to raise these rates. And if we go with a higher rate, that'd be 2.6 unless the Fed drops the rate again. And, you know, there are no forecasts in the next 6, 10, 12 years of forecast. So, I'd like to go with Citizens and go with the Fed plus 10 points is 2.6 as today as we speak. Of course, it would vary if the Fed dropped the rate quarter. But as Lois said, been in history, it was .25. So, I make a motion, we go...
We got that on 5-3. So, it'll be down there when we get it.
I just want you all to look at that.
I also want to commend Mr. Schmidt about our finances in our food service program. We started the year in a major deficit. We came up with some plans that we presented to you that we want to do. And Mr. Donnelly and the food service program have done a tremendous job of that.
And I think he said today, the payment that was made, I think, were less than 17,000 in total food service debt.
That's total debt. But the offset to that is we've been selling snacks through food service through the year. We have collected, just on selling snacks, $12,000. So, that food service debt, then, when you put the snacks towards that debt, we have shrunk that debt from around 27,000 to in essence, 5,000 in this one year.
That's what we have. On our government account, we have a separate proprietary fund for food service. That's correct, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. So, while we still have the debt and we still are collecting, we are trying to offset that to where we hope to be in the black. And we talked about maybe getting the kids, what jumpstart?
Our plan is on the 5th, 6th, and 7th, when the students come in for schedules, we'll have somebody set up there as well to help them enroll in MySchoolBucks so that the parents can see how everything's online and how you can make payments. A lot of them don't realize that you can make payments through the app. And we wanted to have somebody, a representative there to just inform them.
And I think the program would let them set it up to where they'll be notified if their lunch balance gets below...
Like, you can have it set up below $10 and you start getting a notification.
Do you think it made a big difference, did you pay online?
I do. As a parent, it was more convenient because I could see like...
Because I was probably about four, couple years ago, we were told we had $12,000 a year loss. When we asked them, they said, well, the system's not supposed to make you money anyway.
Those are really bad. I don't know, I don't know about that.
That statement, some might be worth a present, maybe.
Really bad. And it's been a team effort. And I want to thank everybody involved, and Ms. Austin and Ms. Webb have been critical in it as well. We've done a great job of that program, getting it back on solid footing.
And what most people don't realize too is food service, we're a self-sustaining entity, it's got to pay the workers, cafeteria workers. Most people, I think, it comes out of general fund, but it's what pays our cafeteria workers.
Did we have that before? And council receiver board just didn't have it mentioned on our, wasn't mentioned. So, this would be additional revenue coming in.
Yes. And that's, that money had to be replenished by general fund.
Yeah.
So, any money that we get back is money that we can spend on kids in the back room.
That's right. Anything that we start getting into a loss on food service, general fund, we'll have to pick up.
Board, I'd like to thank everyone in the room for the completion of a school year, Ms. Austin and Ms. Webb. The last six months have been challenging for our district. We've dealt with some, hopefully, once-in-a-lifetime events. Really, I hope so. We lost a very dear colleague in January, and Mr. McClure's health situation has been, it's been, it's been a tough six months. But the thing that I'm the most proud of is when things get bad, you either see chaos or you see things run smooth. And I think the district as a whole has run really smooth. And I want to commend Ms. Austin. She came into a very difficult situation and really performed admirably. Her staff was phenomenal, and her students performed exceptionally well. So, that being said, we've got a tremendous future ahead of us, excited about the programs that we're putting in place and working on. Couple of, I've had conversations just right before the board meeting with Howard Rogers office, we're trying to develop a, some type of drone academy for our kids next year. So, I've got that contact. We're in negotiations with Morehead State to help us with that. Obviously, we've got other programs through the high school that we're working towards that we presented a couple of months ago. So, it's, it's a good time to be a Paintsville Tiger. So, we're very excited about that. And I want to thank, thank you for the job that you do as board member. Sometimes it's a, it's a selfless role that you guys are in, and the strength of our system resides directly here. So, that's all I've got this month. We do have several things to talk about in post-session. We've got some vendors here that would like to talk to us. So, that's all we got.
All right. Other school representatives or community members, any messages to the board, communications from them? Okay. First one, our board.
We do have the announcement of John Brown retiring. So, we're very thankful to him. I think he's enjoying his rocking chair.
At what date? June 30?
He's announced it. So, it is his last day. Before us, it'd be June, middle of June. So, that's all we got this month, then.
Onto action items. Approval of bond depository.
Well, Mr. Walker, if you look, this is consent, consent agenda items. These are several items that are required by the district to enter into. And I will briefly touch on each one of these, and we can have one motion to approve 5-1, 1 through 5-111. If you've got any questions, we've got the people here to ask. Approval of bond depository.
We need to approve that as we go. You know, we talked about Citizens, that's 2.6%.
Well, that's down on 5-3. When we get the Citizens, it's a 5-3. So, that's an action item.
On bond depository.
Yeah. KSBA conferences, you all will be attending. When's the first one, 8-11?
July 12th or 13th.
And then, we've got the one in December and one in February next year. MOU with Morehead State University, MOU with Big Sandy Healthcare, MOU with Cardi Perkins Job Corps, we want to touch briefly on that one. We did have some contract language adjusted in there. Up until this year, we were required to have three teachers if they had one child or they had 100. There was no...
This identifies the student teacher ratio.
Yes. So, Cardi Perkins has, under their guidelines, it's an 18 to 1 student teacher ratio. So, inside their contract, that contract says if they've gone 18 kids, they get one teacher. So, that helps us there. Their enrollment, the past year was 29 kids. So, that helps us there quite a bit. EKU is just MOU with School of Justice, KDSI. That is, I think Mr. Walker actually got that contract down there. We've raised the entree, Joe, you might want to talk about this, on the PES adult entree prices and lunch. We do have one facility request. Ms. Austin, you've got that through the gentleman, I can't remember their name.
Mr. Church, I can...
It's a church group, isn't it?
It's a church group that was going to borrow the gym for two hours.
That's good gym.
Yeah. Do you, are you all...
Oh, yeah, I know.
Do we have that too? We'll get you taken care of on that one, but first back to church for school, that may as well.
Yeah. Well, that's a great for me.
Then we do have policy updates for number 42 packet and number 23 packet. I will tell you that this particular session created more policy updates than probably the last 10 years combined. So, it's a rather lengthy packet to go through. It impacts a lot of areas for us. So, we are going through that. We will need to have a special call meeting pretty soon. We'll talk more about that later to get the second reading on that. But with all this new safety bills and the new requirements for board members, it's huge. It is, and that's one reason why it's so late. Normally, we have that first of May. We didn't get it to May the 31st, about 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So, it's a massive amount of stuff. So, those are your consent agenda items. If anyone's got any other questions, I'll try to answer them. We can get one motion to, that's all of them.
Okay. On the consent agenda, my motion is 5.1, 1 through 5.1, 11. I'll make a motion to approve 5.1, 1 through 5.1, on a later on consent agenda.
I'll say.
All in favor? Anybody opposed to this? 5.2, motion to approve monthly invoices.
Joe, watch that out. I thought I got the second half of it.
I make a motion to approve the monthly invoices and the amount of...
Of course, it's sideways.
And it's first place.
It's first page, isn't it?
No, it's last page.
Yes.
Hit view. Computer pop that a little more.
Joe, you know where, can you read this?
Maybe you couldn't. 95,000, 930 dollars and 20 cents.
No, you're talented, read sideways.
What do you have?
I can't do it on this stuff. I have to...
We have a second.
I'll say.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Anybody opposed to this? Motion to approve banking services for 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021. And I will be abstaining from this as I am a member of the Citizens Board, so...
I make a motion that we could, we could choose Citizen National Bank for our banking service, or bank, bank for the next two years. And we'd like to have our funds invested in Fed Fund plus 10, 10 basis points.
I'll say. All in favor? Show me as abstaining. 5.4, motion to approve 2019, 2020 salary schedules and extra service schedules and district allocations.
It appeared to be the same as last year, exactly.
We actually are positive enrollment at Job Corps. We directly moved there. This is where, this is where we keep asking that question. So, Joe, does this impact us in a negative or positive way? We save money as a push?
Yeah, it's...
Turn the camera around, sweetie.
No, from the, from the moves that he's done here, as far as pulling the back from Job Corps, the amount of the teacher, student ratio up there was, was it three? And they only had like 28 students, so we pulled one back. So, it's, we're able to push, pull.
Well, that's the back of that federal exam that we family took. We had to fall back about 100 feet. They came in there and they found something 10 or 15,000 off. They'd say, no material effects. He said, we go to large banks, our bank, it'd have to be at 200,000 before they'd say no material effects. So, 15, 20,000, no material effects.
No material effects. Actually, we're to the good a little bit better. So, we're actually in the good. So, I just, our number one priority, and we had this conversation with Mr. Baker and Joe and I, Matt and I talked about it publicly, is to provide more for our kids and also have a fiscally solvent budget. And I'm excited in the work that we've done, we're providing more for our kids. Joe's got a great proposal, and he'll talk to you about that here in a second. Is it on there, Joe? Did we do the KDSI? We've already done that. We're going to be able to offer hopefully new computers for our staff at a negative little cost next year. So, we're excited about that. So, be smart with our money. We're good stewards with our money, and that starts with you guys. good stewards with our money, and that starts with you guys, so.
Which one was that agreement on?
It was KDSI 1-8, but yeah.
I make a motion for the 2019, 2020 salary schedules for extra service and district allocations.
Say.
Any questions? All in favor? Anybody opposed to this?
I thought we had caught that student ratio issue.
Motion to approve first reading of 2019-20 certified personnel evaluation plan.
No substantial changes?
There are no changes. KU's required no changes this year, so it's exactly the way it was last year.
So Ken rated for us last year.
Yes, so it's still good. There is an assurance form though that I need, I'll need a few signatures on, but other than that, I've got, it's in his, it's in his papers. Okay.
I'm busy over here signing.
I make a motion, we approve the 2019, 2020 certified personnel evaluation plan.
I'll say.
All in favor? Anybody opposed to this? 5.6, motion to approve insurance quotes for 2019-20 school year.
Insurance property and liability went from 100,000 to 103, which is typical. It's a relatively small increase. Our workers comp, actually, we got a reduction there of about 14,000.
This should be the third year.
We've got one more year with a high one.
Okay.
So our experience mod had the three years. We've got one of those high ones off. Next year will be the last one, so we may even gain some money next year on our workers comp. So we're-
And was it that kid that, yeah, one of the payments that we had to pay? I think that's going to go on after one more year.
We got one more. We got one more year on that. So overall, we've done a good job with-
Was it about 12,000 a year?
14 or something.
170,000.
Yeah, I think it's going off after one more year.
So I make a recommendation that we accept the quotes. I thought they were really, really good. Keep the same age.
We did have the real good quotes, except unless they went broke. Guess what? They went broke, and we were the owners.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's half the story. I think the problem is, is Kentucky Department Education told us to go with this company.
They recommended it, and we crashed.
I'll make a motion to approve insurance quotes for 2019, 2020 school.
Say.
Any discussion? All in favor? Anybody opposed to this? Okay, motion to adjourn from regular session and enter into executive session under the appropriate KRS sections to discuss acquisition or sale of property, section 1, post-ending litigation, section 2, personnel management, section 3.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to regular session. Regular session to executive session.
Say.
All in favor?
We just ran 10 to 15 minutes.